I think what intrigued us was the project that started in Wilton, Connecticut just a couple of years ago that has expanded from Wilton, Connecticut to pretty much every other town and contiguous community. And they've been very successful in doing exactly what Chad has outlined, from involving a number of constituents within the community, whether it be the garden club, whether it be schools, whether it be churches, whether it be villages, existing parks, libraries, basically it's sort of brought this entire community together. And the other partnership that's developed around this is the Hudson to Post Atomic. Chad's been actively involved in participating in their meetings to learn how do they do this, how do they get started, how do you plan this out, what's the short-term plan, what's the long-range plan? And I think from that particular program, they actually provide a template for how to do this, whether it's from, you know, providing visualization tools or maps to indications as to the types of things that you should be mindful of, to native plant selections and things of that sort of also our garden club and native plants under locally would be able to collaborate with those folks. So we have essentially a very successful effort in our own backyard that we can turn to for some guidance on how best to structure and implement and that's a great thing that we're doing.
So in terms of goals, one thing really great about this project, and I think this has been true in other communities, is that, you know, the land trust has its own kind of goals. We want to identify and preserve open space in our community and find ways of making it more accessible and connected and all the benefits and breaks to our community. But there's a lot of other organizations that are also very interested in environmental issues, gardening, sustainability, and they, I think, can latch on to this concept and bring those and meet those same goals simultaneously in a very complementary and constructive way. And so that's been really positive. We'll talk about some of the folks we've talked to already. I think that also this project can really advance a lot of the goals I said that the village and the board trustees specifically have been working on in the comprehensive plan, in the environmental action plan, in the 2018-2019 priorities you said about, you know, advancing education, about sustainability, working to use the great work that's been done at the nature center, and I've spent time with the folks at the nature center about this, how did that get leveraged and brought down to other parts of the village in a really positive way that make people more aware of the nature center and we can take some of the education and learning from there and provide those sort of things. And then I think it's also consistent with the climate smart pledge that the village did, you know, back in 2012 and answered that as well. And so in certain ways, and again, it really can, I think, advance a lot of goals of what's going on. So let me touch quickly about who we've kind of contacted, we've talked to, and I will say we've, I've been reaching out to a lot of different people. It's summertime and not everybody has had a chance to meet and put their heads together about, you know, how they might participate, what they can do, but I've gotten a lot of positive feedback. As I said, we've reached out to the garden club with Veronica, and I've met with Veronica several times, and Martha Fino and Susan Weisenberg from the garden club about all of this. I have been communicating with Joe, as you know, Joe or she know, couldn't be here tonight, kind of a family thing, but Rick could see here, I think, to kind of speak on his behalf, I hope. You know, I won't speak for Joe, but I think Joe is, thinks it's a great idea, but I think wants to get some direction from the board about their views on this and what should be done for that and all of it. I spoke to the woods committee and to Nikki and to other members of the woods committee about all this idea. Obviously, we've been in touch with the green policy task force, both Ann and Leola, MJ Wilson, Ann Altman, who bring to it a lot of both expertise and passion for some of the things we want to accomplish. I've reached out to Rick on behalf of the recreational parks advisory committee. I met with Rosemarie Edrick at the library and talked to her about the new garden that's at the library, and I've talked to Lillian, Laura Lillian Field, the board, who said, yes, this is a great idea, we want to be on board. I've talked to Eileen Fisher about her use of her new house along Main Street up here and perhaps using that as part of our pathway. I've reached out to native plant center at the WCC, who bring a lot of resources and expertise, and I haven't had a chance to meet with them yet, but I'm hoping to do that. I've written to Alan Richardson on the tree commission. I haven't heard back from Alan yet, but one thing I've learned that in, up in Connecticut, different groups have taken the lead on this, and I think it's in Ridgefield, I think the tree commission is the one that's really been behind all this because of the role of pollinators. Ann reached out to the theater and the film society here in Irvington about using technical theater to perhaps have a film series and a panel discussions about some of these issues, both for kids and for adults. I am meeting with Chris Harrison, Raina Corr, and Carol Stein on Monday to talk about how to get the schools potentially integrated with this. And then we've also reached out to some of the local churches because we think some of our, my views where the pathway may go goes right through some of their property. And I think, I think Leola has been involved with the Presbyterian Church, for example, about perhaps advancing this as well. So kind of what's our near-term schedule? We are spending a lot of time talking to people in around this idea, getting up to speed ourselves and learning about how to make this all work. As I said, I have this August 13 meeting with Chris and Raina. We have scheduled a September 11 public meeting at the senior center. It's going to be open to the public, but I'm actually hoping that that will be a meeting for some of the more core groups to get together and start doing some planning together and thinking, how do we make this idea work well in our community, you know, given our specific needs and structures and things like that. We're hoping to use also to set out a schedule over the fall as kind of an educational process, where we're going to bring some speakers and hopefully do some presentations on pollinators, on native plants, use of pesticides or not using pesticides, just why, what's the connectivity of all of this to our community? With the idea that we would then have a pilot launch in the spring, try to either seed sale, adding to the native plant sale that's done at the native plant center or through the garden club, and having more public events highlight this and whatever. So that's kind of a short-term goal. I'll turn it back to Heidi about, there's a lot to be done, how we need to do.
Yes. So there are so many resources that Chad has mentioned that we've talked to, so really the coordination around those resources and who's taking the lead on which part we have to do down, as well as defining the actual pathway. So the actual green spaces in the corner, I think we'll get into that in a little bit, walk you through some of the ideas that we've been discussing, as well as tap into the existing resources so that from a planning perspective, if we are going to have an official launch in the spring, which is what our plan is, making sure that each one of the steps along the way is well mapped out and take advantage of what we've learned from others. The, we will need to create, obviously, a working out of this because so much of the, this is such a visual, a visual tool and a visual guide for the community, and so we want to make sure that the design of the map and the materials and the, really the education and branding of how we roll this out is very visually appealing as well to all age groups. We think to that end, too small children back there, but the educational program around this, we think, is incredibly important, involving all of the schools and the libraries. So really, one of the reasons why we're eager to talk to the folks on Monday is so that we can see if we can actually weave this into whether it's the creation of a club at those schools, or if it's a broadening the scope of the gardens that are already on the school properties, whether it's something that can be part of the science educational program that's, that's what has been since many more environmental studies are broadening into this category generally across the country, so we're not quite sure if it is in our specific district. So developing that actual learning program. And then obviously, how we wish to communicate with the community is this building off of existing websites and communication vehicles and marketing vehicles within the, within the village, or do we need to create another one, or is it best to, best to kind of create an identity and weave it through all of the pockets, just like the pathway will do. So that's something that still is to be decided. And then really, the planning of the events and making sure that we pick the right set of events for the right time of the year to propagate this message, to involve the community at different times of the year, and also to be able to measure the, measure the success of this. I think people are going to need to feel as though there's a feedback loop to this, and so really starting to plan out for events for the spring and beyond, but also making sure that the community feels a sense of results that we can associate with this. It'll be beautiful, and, but we also want to make sure that we measure what we do. So those are all of the various efforts, if you will, that need to take shape in the next couple of weeks to a couple of months.
So perhaps if you just turn to the map, if I can tell you. Well, so I get no credit for this, this is due to, this is actually the building department's website, I lost there, but I'm not sure if Googlers could have it together. We obviously have more groups to talk to and to kind of build in the idea about this, and where and how you build this pathway, it's several things. I said it's to tie together pollinator pockets that, some of which already exist in the village, but it's also designed frankly to tie in different groups, to make them connect to it, gives you a visual sense of that. So one tentative way of, one tentative set of pathways, starting down by the river in Madison and St. Park, and going up to Main Street, clipping and getting in the Irvington library, puts that new garden, and the new, and they have in line, already have a butterfly program for children, which Rosemarie was very excited about and wants to add into this. Having it come up Main Street and, you know, be perhaps reinforced work that's being done by the beautification committee to, for planting and, and other things to kind of highlight the greenery and the resources along Main Street. Up to the aqueduct, as I said.
You're skipping Nikki's house, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to sweep right over Nikki's house. As you know, Eileen's new place is right on the east side of Main, south side of Main Street, on the aqueduct. I hope to have part of the pathway cut down the aqueduct down to Nevis. You know, there's the pre-existing gardens at Nevis, Nevis was originally supposed to be in Arboretum. I'm hoping to get engaged with Heidi Garwood over there, I haven't spoken to her yet, but that's part of the plan. But then perhaps have it also turn up Hamilton up to Halsey Pond to be, to reach that kind of underutilized and often not recognized park that's up there utilized to some extent. And potentially also kind of go into the country club eventually, if I can get the country club to think about doing some of this, that would be really great. The other part of the pathway, when you get up Main Street to the, to the aqueduct would be to cut north and over the churches, the Presbyterian Church, the Maccat Conception and St. Barnabas, and I think there's already a group at the Presbyterian Church that's kind of expressed interest in doing this. Have it sweep up the high school to, again, capture the high school, then up to the nature center through the northern part of the woods. And while this is just our initial ideas, you know, I think in many ways it captures a lot of different constituencies and groups and organizations, and it ties together both the western part, along the river and whatever, and it ties it together with other parts up in the woods, up in Halsey Pond. And, you know, as you remember, one of the goals way back in the land use report, the year report from 1988, was to create different pathways between different open spaces. And I think it's also consistent with the comprehensive plan of making connections between open spaces and the community. So, you know, that's going to be subject to some discussion, and I, we want to get input, you know, we, this is very much not just, although we're putting our backs into it, it's really, hopefully, I want it to be a broad consensus of groups in the community. And I, we're going to look for input from people, and if people have different ideas, then we can make it unique to what we're going to do. So why are we here and what do we want to do there? You know, which is, which is the obvious question. Let me premise that by saying, I'm not here to ask for money.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that would be, that's, I may come back at some point when there might be a horde of thousands of people here asking for money, that might happen, but we're not there yet. Actually, the land trust is willing to put some of its money into this, just to demonstrate its commitment and whatever. I haven't quite figured out what that will be required, whether that's speakers or stuff, or native plants or whatever, I'm not sure about that yet to be decided. But we are willing to put some of our resources into this because we think this is a really important thing for our community. What I would be interested in having the board consider however, is to potentially consider passing a resolution, recognizing this project as something that is, enhances a lot of goals in the community, and something that the trustees could support conceptually and, and urge people in the community to potentially get involved and, and add their input to it. That's important because I just think that coming from the trustees is a very positive thing. I think it's also helpful, I think, to be blunt, I am going to be hoping to encourage things that come under the jurisdiction of the parks department to also get interested in this, beautification committee, specifically stuff up at the O'Carroll Nature Center. I've sat down with CJ Riley and Peter Strom, who are the two horticulturists up there. And, you know, as you, as you're sure you're aware, CJ has done an incredible job of creating an, in part, educational packet of what they've done up there, and they, they're looking to Joe for guidance and direction or whatever, but I think they, they told me they're excited if there's a way of leveraging the great success they've had up there and bringing some of that down to other parts of the village, both in terms of the educational component, taking some of the native plants they have up there and transporting some of them down here and using them down here, and just making those connections and getting more people to think about going up to the nature center and, and what a beautiful spot that is and how work that is and whatever. And then frankly, I would love to have your individual participation if you're interested and just support, that's always adds glamour and flair to all of us, you know? And I don't know if any of you are gardeners or whatever, but I think that would be really, really wonderful. So to that end, I'm a little presumptuous, but I have drafted a draft resolution not knowing what this should look like. So I offered up as simply a vehicle for you to consider, maybe pass it around. And basically what it does, it doesn't commit you to much other than just saying, here are, here are some of the things that have been important to the village, and we encourage both built residents, we encourage built departments where appropriate, whatever, to support and get behind this program. So again, I don't mean to be presumptuous, but, you know, just taking the opportunity to at least offer that up for you to consider and then think about. So that's what we're asking.
Right, the September 11 senior center, is that a daytime or nighttime?
It's a nighttime event. And it's actually, we scheduled it 7:30, it's the last day of Rosh Hashanah, and, but it's after sundown. So we specifically designed it to be after sundown, so hopefully folks can come and participate. And again, it's, we're going to make it open to the public, I think we're going to try to advertise as we can. Well, what I'm particularly interested in are having groups like the garden club, if the garden clubs are in position to say that they can participate at the point, depends when you guys are going to be meeting, perhaps Rick and the woods committee, green policy task force, have some of the key constituents that I think are in the committee that could really participate this, sit down and say, here's a bunch of ideas, here's what we can do, we think this makes sense, this is where we should put our priorities or not, and just kind of collectively bring together some, some smart folks to think about how to make this happen. So that's what the September 11 meeting.
So you've just set up to rent, to use the building down?
Yes.
You just picked out as your local.
No, no, just, I arranged it with Joe, Joe, I talked to Joe and said that I wanted, he said that's a great place to use, so we've scheduled it in somewhere. Other questions?
So on a practical standpoint, what the expectation would be of a person who's participating in the pollinator program by, by using their property, the churches? You're mostly asking them to plant pollinator types of plants that would encourage this, this activity?
That is correct.
And participate in programming or, or encouraged?
So that's partly correct. Partly to think about, not necessarily supplanting the gardens they have, or, you know, we're not trying to get anybody to remove what they have, but to think about incorporating natural plants, native plants into the gardens or their, or their, what their, their lawns are or whatever. And, you know, I've actually been riding my bike around the village looking for examples of this, there's one on Roland, Roland Road right now, some people are moving, but they have a very beautiful natural garden, native plants in front of their garden. Someone else told me of another one in Spirit Park, which I'm not aware of. But actually, an absolutely gorgeous one, you really want to go and think what they could look like, is you go to the new Terry Town River Walk they've done?
Yes.
Which is stunning, that's very ambitious, you know, that's, that's, that took a long time and a lot of money, but that's, but it's just an example of how you can add in. You know, one question is, does this work on Main Street? You know, because we have just, you know, window boxes and stuff like that. And again, I'm not a gardener expertise, and I'll turn to Veronica perhaps to weigh in on this. But what I've been told by actually CJ and Peter, is that, you know, you can create a barrel, sort of barrel place and use native plants in there as a starting point for this, and they can be very visually beautiful, they can be, but really important pollinators to support this effort. The other thing Larry though, we are going to want people to think about reducing the amount of pesticides and insecticides that they're using, not just in the gardens or in their lawns, because that really negatively impacts pollinators and really, I think, hurts the environment. And we're going to encourage people to come to some of our programs and learn about this. It's really uses, as I said, as a, a living classroom, a way of educating people about a range of environmental issues which, you know, kind of all around us and some people attend to or not, but that I think are really, really important to people. So those are the, so that's what I'm going to be asking people to do. But I actually spoke for a couple of hours today to the people in Wilton about their project and how it's worked, and what happened there was actually, it was started in Wilton by the Wilton Garden Club, and Ridgefield found out about it, the Western found out about it, and they said, we want on board, and they got involved, and now it's a much bigger project. And I have actually spoken to Dan Lemmons, who's one of the trustees on Hastings, and I mentioned to him, he said, oh, that might be really interesting to think about, you know, making connections among the different villages. So those are some of the things we hope to accomplish. You know, one thing that Heidi mentioned is, is thinking about, how do we measure this as a successful program or just a lot of wasted time, a lot of hot energy or whatever? And I actually asked the people in Wilton, how have you done that? And they said, it's hard, but they thought about it in terms of how many new native plants they've been able to plant, and they actually tried to do a butterfly count, which is challenging, but.
Have any of these programs brought in pollinators? Have they brought in these?
So this is not necessarily a program to introduce new pollinators, it's really a program to reinforce and support existing pollinators. So it's, and they actually, you know, as you, I don't know if the board's aware of it, you know, there's, there's a lot of places use honeybees, bring in honeybees, they import honeybees to do pollination, and that's not the goal of this at all, but rather to make people aware of pollinators that already exist in our community and just give them a habitat that allows them to.
So can I ask a question? You started out by talking about pollinator pathways?
Yes.
Which leads me to believe there is a path, you know, a migratory path or whatever. So if you have gaps in your path, how?
So here's my understanding of this, is that, again, the idea of pathway is as much a conceptual branding idea, I mean, people connect with, but I, but I, and I'm not an etymologist, but my understanding of the way a lot of pollinators work and different ones work in different ways, but they will actually, like bees, if they're either a solitary bee or a hive of bees, they will identify a food source and they will go back and forth to that food source. And so that food source could be up to three kilometers away. And so they're leaping over places where there may be no pollinators, but going specifically to places where they are. And what we're trying to do is create, as I said, these packets, these pockets, here and there and whatever, to add and support the growth of those pollinators, whatever. But it's, so it's not one contiguous pathway. There could be people who say, I don't want anything to do with that.
I like my garden, you know, it's like.
Yeah, I like my garden the way it is, I like, you know, and that's okay, I'm not, I'm not here to tell anybody how to do this, I'm trying to encourage them to think about doing some.
Okay, so what I want to make sure we're really clear about just at the start of this, because it sounds obviously wonderful and you've done a tremendous amount of work and involved so many people, and it's got benefits in so many areas which you've laid out very specifically. But I just want to make sure we're seeing the big picture here, so you want us, one of the things you want us to consider is a resolution, but you also envision, not necessarily right away, but that there's a natural course of action that you would like to see the board consider down the line. For example, banning pesticides.
So you're asking me personally? You know, I will say this, my understanding is, here's what I know about the other pollinator pathways. I don't know whether there's been any ban in Wilton or whatever. I think one of the things I'm trying to educate people about is the benefits of not using pesticides. Obviously, the decision to ban pesticides or not raises a host of other issues independent of supporting pollinators, how people want to care for their lawns and whatever. And you guys are more sophisticated than I am about the political challenges in anything like that. I won't say you, I won't come someday and say, you know, I think you should have had that, but, but I will say this, this project, this program is not dependent upon, this, our success is not, does not require you to ban pesticides or to say, everybody has to allow buring bees to be in their yard or anything like that. What it really is, is educating people about the continuity of our environment and how they can be connected.
Okay, I just, I'm going to ask it again in a different way. Just, do you foresee, as part of your accomplishing this very wonderful goal here, do you foresee a need for board action beyond a resolution?
So here's where I think there might be a need for board action in the future. One, and I, this, I, you know, I've talked to Joe a little bit about, you know, how the parks could be involved. For example, just maybe one place, if the parks decided, we wanted to create a pocket, pollinator pocket down at scenic Hudson or Madison Park, all right, which would be identifying an area within the parks, planting native plants there and supporting it over time. You know, whether that would require board action to direct the parks to do that or not, I'm not sure, but that's one possibility. Another possibility would be, you know, if later on we, we find that the educational program is a really positive one, we may come back to the board and say, we think the educational program is really positive, and we would love the board to put funding to that, so that I can see doing that. But if you're asking me, Janice, whether we want to be post-preemptive, we prohibit, we want you to bar certain activities, we want you to limit, prevent people from doing what they want to do in their individual homes, that's not my plan right now.
Limit or require, I guess, for fancy business.
That's not my, my understanding of, of programs that have been in place, that's not the program owners, that's, that it's, it is more educational and encouraged.
You want people to buy in.
I want people to buy in, I'm.
But there are always those who don't.
Yes, and there will be people who don't.
I'd like to be clear going into this, where this might lead, so.
I think the only other place that I would suggest is that if any of the other river towns are interested in partnering with us, that would clearly likely be a important level involvement to make sure that, and whether there are funds that are associated with that or not, or we're able to manage that through the other community outreach budgets.
And let me, let me, I think that's right, I think that would be a really, because I think that'd be a great connection across. But let me also say in response to your specific question, this, this is not something that will be, is going to be dictated or run explicitly by the land trust. There's going to be different groups, green policy task force, other groups that get involved, and they may have their own agendas, and they, there may be people within those groups who are going to say, ban pesticides or, or, you know, demand this, and I can't tell you that that may not come out of this effort. That's not, I don't foresee that right now, but I have, I don't know, I haven't seen.
And your examples that you'll follow, I assume the Connecticut example and the Seattle example.
example, I mean, if you guys are keeping your eye on what they've done and not done, and what seems to have built consensus, and what they viewed as, you know, this doesn't make sense. It is an interesting question about how you measure, did it make any difference? I mean, in your opening, you said you're dedicated, and I've always been, to this idea of creating open space. So it's a good, it's a good way to bring that to the public's forefront of thinking, and you can measure that. But in terms of how are the pollinators more or less there or not, or I, maybe somebody knows how to measure that, but maybe it doesn't matter.
Maybe it doesn't matter.
Maybe it doesn't matter, but it would be, it's just an interesting question.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we're continuing to look at and explore. And I do know in Seattle, they are now contributing their surveys and counts for butterflies and moths, or butterfly and moths for America Association. They're also testing the soil quality in the pockets that are part of the pathway to see if there are differences in the quality of the soil as it relates to this over time. The CERA and particular other groups that have become involved in this program have been awarded a significant amount of grant as well, which probably would be another area where we would want to work with the board if there was a grant where we thought it made sense to actually involve the board and to garner support, and/or as a place to place funds if it was awarded. So I think measurements in ordinance probably is not, I don't think it's critical, but I think it's important to know what we should measure and how to determine success, and also how to determine what to do year over year, because this is not a one-year effort. This is a forever effort.
So I'll give you another example, because in the discussion I had today, I'm sorry, but again, I spoke to this woman, Ronsey Wilson Garden Club, who's head of the board. She said, "One thing they tried to do was to get a pledge from people that they wouldn't use pesticides," so it was an absolute failure. No one, everyone thought it was a great idea, but no one would sign a pledge. And they said, "This is ridiculous. This doesn't do us any good. It's kind of a wasted effort." So they're not doing it. And what they're doing instead is giving the educational component, encouraging in a positive way to get people to think about that, but they're not being constructive in that way.
And in terms of measuring success, I've seen reports from rural communities where farmers have been having a hard time growing crops because they didn't have the correct type of pollinator that suits that crop. But when they introduced certain non-hybrid plants in the area, in large undeveloped areas, they were able to bring back the pollinators they needed to fertilize these plants, and it worked. So some research and some data from those communities that have been successful in farming may be useful to us, and I don't know.
So maybe what we could do is, I'm sorry, just pollinator support, we can just have people measure, I don't think there's...
Oh, Mary Ann.
I'm sorry.
Mary Ann.
Prices will fall.
No, just a basic thing I'm a little confused about, as somebody who attracts, I'm a big hummingbird person, I have a lot of hummingbird feeders and hummingbird plants and stuff. Why is there any advantage to it all being on a particular path as opposed to encouraging Mark to do, encouraging anybody who wants to do it? Like, what difference does it make if it's all one path? That's the part I don't understand.
And I think, to be fair, it doesn't probably need to be a path, but one good thing about it being a pathway, it doesn't need to be a path, it's a conceptual path. It's a conceptual path. And frankly, what it does, if people work visually, it does a couple of things. One, it gives people a bigger perspective about the connections of it all. But from our point of view, it ties together different places in the village that we want people to be thinking about. And so you don't have to do with pollinators, whatever, and there could be gaps in all of it, so it's more a branding exercise.
You know, because I'm just thinking, it might be excluding people.
So we could have a pollinator slot.
When you look at some of the research being done, for instance, out of Cornell, out of Syracuse, and some other places there, where they're trying to create, I discussed this before, creating areas that combine properties, not literally a path, but they're getting groups of properties with neighborhoods to agree to plant native intensity, tri-level planting, whatever, the things that give all the various levels to ground, shrub, and tree. And the way they're approaching it is to try to get critical density of areas. So there's kind of a hopscotch effect. It's not literally a paths per se, but they do have, it is, they have their own kind of little branding, they have, people agree to become part of the program, and then they have services available, but I don't know why, because on a grant basis, I don't know if this is ongoing, but they actually bring in some landscape architects to help groups and neighbors plan. Not that each yard has to be lockstep with the next yard, but just so that the overall impact has the most effect.
And I think it's, they're finding these different community indoor private open spaces and just drawing a line between them. So in effect, it's really not one pathway, as you're suggesting, it's actually branches of pathways that would cover as much of the land mass that we possibly can, because these pollinators are only, their distance is about 2,400 feet to like one and a half miles. So I read in a funny article, it was from a hummingbird's perspective, because we're all thinking about a walking pathway, probably when we look at this versus when they're flying, they're looking for what is in their radius. So it is not a straight line necessarily. But I think that the branding exercise builds the awareness, and so hopefully then you'd say, "Oh, I would like to build the line, the branch that way," or...
Yeah, I think it is an interesting concept for people to begin to see something in their head, even though it does kind of lead you down the trail that your head was going to, that it actually had to be connected, but it's... It's obviously worked in Seattle and elsewhere that that term pathway has...
And is there a destination? Like, is this like the water butterflies who wind up in that? Is there a destination location that if you've got, you're doing it, and there's like a 40-mile gap until the next station on the railroad, you know?
So the other thing about measurement, the only thing I can come up with is, think about Doug Tallamy's research about bird populations and the requirements to have effectiveness of native plants, including trees, native trees, in terms of providing caterpillar resources, especially in the spring, there's almost every bird around that feeds their young feeds them on protein. And about what the adult diet is, when the, they're all being fed on flesh, on caterpillars, insects. So one of the, I don't know what you call it, it's a criteria that they're using, it's kind of an abstraction, is looking at bird counts and bird differentiation, how many species there are, because that actually indicates something about the health of the local ecosystems in terms of supplying food. And generally, the food is caterpillars and similar insects, and caterpillars, as you know, are baby butterflies and hawks, generally speaking. So anyways, the point is that you can virtualize it that way. It's not quite the same as, I saw, I counted six swallowtails this year, but you know, one last year.
And Doug Tallamy, one of his thesis is, is that these, you need specific plants to support certain specific native insects to support the native birds. And that, so, again, we're not trying to supplant and change the whole environment here. We're simply trying to get people to think about adding to it in a way that supports beautiful plants, animals, and life increase, wildlife preservation, which is a big thing with it.
We would definitely think about this resolution.
And this is very educational. Thank you very much.
I'd like to just make one more comment from a practical standpoint. I know that you're not asking us for funding, but you are asking us to make a resolution that you then can leverage, specifically with our Parks and Recreation Department, to ask them to do things that will require expenses to come from that, using CJ and that. You can go down to other locations, perhaps, so there may be some...
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. And that's why I want you to work with Joe. No, and honestly, Larry, you're absolutely right. And I talked to Joe, and I know Joe's very sensitive about that, Parks Department's budget is very limited. And like even, I suggest to Joe, just to give an example, and he's very thoughtful on this, I said, "It would be nice to have CJ or Peter come to the suite," and Joe said, "No, I don't really want to pay the cost of their time," and I get that. I fully get that. And frankly, that's why the land trust, at least in these initial stages, is willing to put some of its own budget in. But you're right, whether it's just simply encouraging, allowing us to go sit down and talk to CJ about the educational materials they put together, it could be that we're going to say, "Well, why don't we take a small swath of Seadeck Hudson and plant some new plants there, and then, is that going to require new maintenance?" I understand all of that could be looming, but I have to leave it to Joe and to you guys to figure out what you can do or not.
I think I generally, he's supportive of at least...
I think he is. And I, Rick, I don't know whether you want to weigh in on that or not, but...
I mean, I have had several conversations with Joe about it, and Larry hit the nail on the head. As with all our programs, we'll do whatever the Board of Trustees wants us to do with what we have. The problem is, what we have is limited. So, you know, we'll have to look at the big picture. Maybe on September 11th, the picture will be a little more clear about exactly where, what particular plantings will have to be maintained by the rec. But that's his biggest concern. Our biggest concern right now is not really knowing the whole full scope of what's about to happen, or what they want to happen, and how it affects our budget, and what we need to do, what we need to come up with.
That's important, for sure.
And I'm very sensitive to that as well, and frankly, I don't think we know yet all that this may or may not entail. And it may be, it starts slowly, it may start without having any direct impact in the parks, but I just, you know, I would love to be able to get the beautification committee, for example, to think, "Oh, this would be something we should maybe try to add in if we can," because our process and that obviously impacts the parks budget as well.
I know we need to wrap this up.
But super quick, on the issue of the Nature Center in the woods and everything, in a way, it's leveraging what has already been done by the Woods Committee and the O'Hara Nature Center in building Pollinator Garden up there. If any of you have not seen it yet, it's mind-blowing. It's absolutely stunningly productive in regard to supporting pollinators. It's exactly what CJ envisioned, it's exactly what they raised money for two years ago, and they built very successfully. So actually, what Chad and Randy are doing with this project is bringing that to awareness and attention of the urban town community, that the O'Hara Nature Center has these resources already existing up at the nature center. They can walk up there for free and walk through those gardens at any time. So it's kind of on its head in a way, that the Pollinator Pathways Project is actually going to, in the end, be very supportive to what's already happened and is happening at the O'Hara Nature Center and in the woods.
And frankly, vice versa. What we've asked CJ to do with the educational materials on all of our gardens will lend itself very well to implementing on people's personal properties what it is that we need to have them do. So it's going to tie in in both ways. It's going to be a circular event. And I just want, you know, when we did the nature center, we really had zero budget. But I think the way the rec and the people working with the rec and for the rec have built that facility up to what it is today, you know, together with... I think the Board of Trustees saw how important that was, and they helped fund it. So it's hard to say, in the future, or in the near future, that the Board of Trustees isn't going to come around and say, "This is really a worthwhile project, and we need to help Joe be able to afford to do what it is and needs to be done."
And I'll just say, from my point of view, having sat down with CJ and Peter, what they've done and what the Woods and the parks is incredible. And I think they would be excited about leveraging that out, and I'm excited about that.
Rick, there's the synergy for foundations that are in sync with each other. So are you guys good?
Yeah, we're good. I mean, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. You've really made a lot of contacts and have a great map.
Yeah, you can keep the maps. So thank you very much.
Food scraps and jappy food scraps.
Thanks, Anne.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks, Anne. Thank you again.
Thanks so much, Chad. Bye, Veronica. Thanks for your input. So on food scraps, I think was, I think Larry...
I'll just give a quick update, yeah.
Larry's going to give an update, we're going to get a little back and forth.
So, yeah, so obviously, over the last several weeks, there's been an effort to try to implement a collection of food scraps at the farmer's market, which would then be carted by a private carter away once a week, early, early in the week, hopefully. So the contract that's been worked out, which I reported earlier in the day, but the contract that's been worked out is with suburban carting. The monthly amount is $325 a month. The contract is for a total of 24 months, but can be canceled within the first six months. After the first six months, then it's in for the remaining 18 months. The reason for the six months and the reason that's helpful is that it'll allow for other developments of food scrap collection that are out there. There's potential for Greenberg to coordinate an effort. There's other, you know, another facility possibly opening up. There's a lot of different moving parts, and we don't know about them exactly today, but we may in six months. If we don't, and, you know, nothing's included in the Greenberg budget, for example, for next year, then we'll have a contract that'll continue through 2019 and into 2020 at the 325 rate.
So the way the farmer's market is involved?
Yeah, so the folks at the farmer's market have embraced the idea. They seem to see that this is an asset, an amenity to offer to their visitors, be able to drop off their food scraps. So the farmer's market, out of the funds that they generate, has agreed to pay for this. So the 325 a month is, will come from the farmer's market funds that they generate from their operations.
How did you get them down to 325?
I think the 325 is what we've talked about, that was originally...
It was the original price, and then on the phone, remember, they bumped it up? But you must have had a good conversation with them, Larry, I had it too.
Well, no, it was, yeah, there was a little confusion between a school rate and a village rate, and, you know, this is being done at the school, but it's a village, so, anyway, it's all straightened out, 325 is the number, and still largely not cancelable, except for the one six-month out.
Which is good, because then we can see what the landscape looks like at that point.
Yeah, if it's no clearer than today, then we're going to be ended for another 18 months, and...
It's hard to imagine Greenberg's ability.
No, the other place, the other carter might actually get up and running.
Yeah.
So, Andy, do you want to add something? Oh, I'm sorry, Janice.
I think this is a terrific resolution, because my one concern was not about doing it, but that if Greenberg was considering it, and maybe, and we, and maybe other communities have got private carters, then a larger community wouldn't be served, because Greenberg wouldn't go ahead with it. That was my only hesitation. This solves that, six months is reasonable, and all good.
Right. And so from a timing standpoint, if the contract is signed tomorrow, they, it looks like they could get the toters delivered, there'll be up to, there'll be four delivered. They can be delivered over the course of this upcoming week, next week, and the collection could start basically at the 20th, I think is what we said. They would come and collect the 20th, which would be the market of the 19th. I mean, I'll confirm all that, of course, but so that you can get the right word out. Two weekends.
Yeah, a week from Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah, a week from Sunday.
Yeah.
So, and as far as what the volunteer responsibilities are, things that the village is going to be dependent on volunteers to do.
Right.
That's going to be collection.
Right.
Storage.
Monitoring.
Monitoring.
It's going to be on the school property for just four toters. So it's limited to just four 65-gallon toters, and so.
Are these toters sealed?
They, they have a lock mechanism.
Will the bags be going in? No, no, I mean, sealed on the top. I mean, the inside of the toters, are they going to be like a big bag?
We're going to have liners.
They're going to have liners, yeah. They're, they're not, the way it was.
They have to be kept clean from the mess. If you have a liner, it'll be a lot easier to keep them clean.
They're not, they're not liquid tight. So, you know, there really needs to be some control over, you know, a liner of some sort in there. But if you were to fill them up with liquids, they'd, it would be coming out of the handle where the, where the truck picks them up. I mean, there's, just telling you.
And the compost bags themselves actually decompose fairly quickly, so certain types of food in them cause, especially high acidity food, I think, cause the compost bags to break down.
And heat, and heat. So the summer is harder than the winter, honestly. And, but we will be lining the toters and maybe even double lining them in the heat, frankly. And the volunteers will make sure the liners are in before anybody puts anything in on the Sunday market. Food collection will happen only.
So four of those?
Four of those.
Oh, thank you, Larry. That's great. Larry, Larry, can suburban, will suburban provide us with the liners? Or, so I can get them.
Okay.
You know, the Green Policy Task Force can, can get those.
Okay. Didn't come up in our conversation.
Okay, okay. So we'll, we'll make sure the liners are in before Sunday morning. Collections only during the farmer's market. We'll not have people able to go in and dump things in those toters between. And hopefully, suburban carting will be coming promptly. It won't be Monday, they already told us. It might not even be Tuesday, but by Wednesday, they'll have carted the food scraps.
And your volunteer group, how, how are the volunteers being organized for this, or ensuring that there are sufficient volunteers for this?
Yeah, the Green Policy Task Force currently has 17 members and people who really believe in this. So we are, we feel we have a good cadre of volunteers to make sure that this is covered even when, you know, various people are away.
So you had kind of a system that you started with before.
Yeah.
And then it got stopped. And so you have those same volunteers, have sort of a sense of.
Who are waiting.
Yes.
Who are waiting to receive help.
Yes.
Waiting and, and we have a list of 150 people who have stopped in at the market and asked about, you know, when they bring their.
Right, carrying their bags. Larry's seen it.
Larry's seen it. And we will be, you know, drawing on their assistance and their, you know, support for monitoring and making sure everything's done right.
But usually, coordination by committee doesn't necessarily always work that well. Are you specific people taking the lead role?
Yes, yes. Myself, Leola, and Anne, Anne Altman. She's on vacation right now, but she will be getting back eventually into its career. And also, we have two high school volunteers that are really wonderful, Sophia Batakis and Nicole Radlauer. So it's a good group.
So, Anne. Look, well, I was just going to ask, the success that you had in the beginning was so great that you weren't able to really do this on your own. How much were you feeling on your success that made you stop? Were you feeling one, six?
The floor was completely full.
So, so actually, as.
Was it equivalent to one toter or two toters?
It was equipped, that's such a good question. It was equivalent, probably, it was about 350 pounds at most at that point when we cut it off and stopped doing it. And 350 pounds would be one and a half toters.
Could be a four.
Yeah. But, but, but you're bringing up a really important conversation.
To give us the room.
That when people, that's all that Main Street School will accept, when those four toters are full, our volunteers have to say, no, done, it's too late. Come earlier next Sunday. You know what I mean? And that's, that is the most important piece of this. You know, it's only four toters, and then, sorry, folks, it's done. Go to Anthony Vetrin.
Go yourself.
They can drop it in Anthony Vetrin. It's not like you have no recourse.
So what's going to prevent people from actually trying to drop things off in the, in the containers outside of Sunday market?
We are going to fasten that, well, the toters have a lock mechanism, but it's not a key lock. So we're going to have to either put like tape and bungees or something on it first to guide people that, sorry, if you missed it, you can't get into this toter now. Do you know what I mean? And believe me, people don't mess with these food toters because they know what's inside, or they wonder what's inside, or they know what might be inside. And so the other drop-off points that have toters have not found that people come and disturb them and add other things. So we feel pretty confident, but I do think that the communication to our, our list of people who want to bring their food scraps has to be very clear that when those four toters are full, it's done. You'll need to go to Anthony Vetrin if yours didn't fit into the toters.
Your, your custodian at Main Street School, I understand, is quite supportive of this. And you have us, so there is, there are people around. It's not like people can just come around to the, the school and, you know, start.
Yeah, yeah. He's taking this very seriously. His responsibility for the, for the.
And he's there, you know, 24/7.
Not 24/7, but he will report to me if there's a problem.
Yep.
And then me and the GPTF will have to do it.
Be sure.
So we are, we are, believe me, we are motivated for proper communication. But that's why it's important that all of you as board members do understand the limitations of what we're doing here. We're only collecting four toters on Sunday morning, and that's it. We're not collecting through the week. It's not an open drop-off. It's not a, people can bring their food anytime. It's only Sunday mornings during the farmer's market.
Do you know what's happened at Hastings? It seems like they've had a.
Yeah, they had such a huge response that they had moved to having dumpsters. So their, their DPW set them up with dumpsters down at Main Street, at their train station, their commuter station. And now they're finding, they're already, they're filling up the dumpsters. It's amazing. But Hastings is, right now, monitoring that. They're, they also have a very large community that's monitoring the situation. But, yeah, no, they reprodrate right to a big dumpster.
So they still have their DPW doing the pickup and drop-off at Veteran?
No, they, no, 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 they've contracted with suburban carting.
So their DPW's.
Very good. No, their DPW was in the picture with the, with the small toters, and then when they moved to the dumpster, now they contracted with suburban, suburban carting.
And they're taking it up to wherever they're taking ours.
Yes. And they did not put a limitation from the beginning. We're putting a limitation from the beginning that once those four toters are full, we're done. That's all Irvington's doing right now, okay? That's why it's so important that we get the communication straight.
So I think we're pretty straight on this now, right? This is, this is a, it's a, it's a, the public.
You did a lot of work to get this done, and.
Right.
I begged, yeah, begged.
Larry's done a great job, and I really, really hats off to Larry for hanging in there, because, you know, this is a new thing that's happening in the culture at large, and it is happening, and it will continue to unfold, and we're early a little bit in the curve of getting in there. So it's a good feel-your-way process, and I appreciate that the Village Board and the administration are, you know, hanging in there to see where this might go. And we are determined to help keep limits manageable for our village.
But we're putting our trust in.
Yes. You're thanking us. We're thanking the volunteers.
We're, we're the ones sweating it out now, guys.
Right, sweating it out. So I think we're moving on to, to bees. And we need.
Speaking of pollinators.
Yes, we need Nikki. And I think, Mary Ann.
It's not a draft.
We're going to review a draft of local law. If you want to just bring us up to date.
Yeah, I mean, you've got the draft that sits after the thing. I mean, I, I think there's a few issues. I mean, maybe we can discuss the issues in order. I can mark a sign for them and, and some of them on the order. The first one would be, we were going to get back to this last time, when we wanted to sell out that beekeeping in the single-family districts, and we were going to get back to when we finished, and we forgot to get back to it. I did bring here, though, a map, so people could see where the non-single-family districts are, what you're talking, what you're talking about, you know.
Multi-family.
Well, there's the, the two families, which are lots off Main Street. The two families. Right, okay. And then there's a multi-family up here, you know, at the Woodbridge. There's a multi-family at a half room. I always wanted Seadeak Water Apartments. There's a, this, I think, is where Genardo, Genardo's developed in this. And then, I don't know where the park, yeah, Hamilton Garden.
Yeah.
Other, other, you know, so there's, there's not a lot of non, non-one family districts, and, but anyway. I mean, my, my thinking is that probably the two F, in the two F districts, there are lots of small. But I, you know, I don't know. And there's smaller, so then the other way to deal with it are put these flyway barriers, and then you want, I don't know. That's you all, I'll, I'll adapt however we want to adapt it.
But right now, the draft is only one family, right, so it's these, the two-family and the multi-family.
I mean, the thing is that for the multi-family, I think it's pretty straightforward that they're not going to be doing anything that the condo or co-op association doesn't allow them to do. So.
No.
But isn't all multi-families are not co-ops and condos? No, but I'm, but I'm talking about.
One of them isn't, this one isn't.
Well, they're rentals, but they still have.
Which ones?
They have to buy.
If we're buying by.
They have to buy. But, but in any, yeah, but, but you're right, they have to buy by the rules. But let's say the condo association says we're fine with it. Well, the statute's written, they can't.
You know, I'm saying the other way around, and I'm saying, why not let, make it more, leave it more open in our statute and let it be managed by the homeowners association in a sense of, with an apartment complex or whatever, I mean, maybe.
Can I make a suggestion? I think this is starting with, I think maybe we should get the broader picture, because there were several unanswered questions before we.
Well, that is one of the unanswered questions.
That's, that's a really, that's a big one. And I mean, we were getting back to it last time, and I, and I don't think that, you know, whether we decide on 25 feet or 10 feet is not going to affect whether you want to allow it in, in these other districts. Maybe the two-family, because if you say, it could be a small box. Okay, if you want, we can come into it, but somebody else.
It is, it is, I'm not minimizing. This is a big concern, but I just want to make sure we know all of the.
Yeah, I felt like if I know the other things on the floor.
Well, this is, the, the other issues are.
I can't remember.
The other issues are about, we agreed last time that the hive should be located at least 25 feet from any property line, and you know, you know, argue for why that doesn't make sense. And, and also, the other location, limitation was that you couldn't have a hive in any front yard, or if you've got a corner lot, in either front, either front yard. Nikki was also, had some thoughts on that. Their particular provision actually is quite prominent, you know, among other, other policies that you have to find here. Okay. Then, and then the flyway barrier, which I left in there in case we get a small limitation of 25 feet, and then, and then the registration, registration issue.
What's the registration issue?
Well, Nikki had questions about registration, like, you know, why you should do it and whatever. But anyway.
Whether it should be done?
Yeah, I think we can get to them later. I hope they're there to backseat those other issues.
So we had chosen 25 feet as a way of sort of making it simple, that it would allow us to not require flyaway barriers, flyway barriers. That could end up being fences that would then require, you know, and by just making it 25 feet, we were sort of making it in some ways easier, as opposed to.
Yeah, I mean, it was fine.
So, so here's where I'm stuck, okay? What you did, and what you did with research laws, as they are in the books in other places to show, so that we could compare and contrast, you know, distances and barriers and flyway zones and whatever. Well, we are talking about an activity here that potentially could be some sort of annoyance or nuisance to neighbors, and rarely, but potentially cause a real hazard to somebody who is allergic to bees. And I am, I just don't, and we're talking about people registering and saying that they've, they know, or they've taken some course, or they understand the principles of beekeeping. Who here is going to monitor that? You want to put that another thing in your list, Larry, or things that you've become an expert in? I just, I'm just not sure. Like, there was an article in The Enterprise, when they were talking, talking about, you know, that we were considering this, where the author of the article quoted a lot of people who know about beekeeping, which was great and helpful, but I honestly feel that this is something, and I understand how parking slots work, sort of, but I did, you know, I don't, I just think we really ought to be more, more better informed about the potential issues here, or whether these are adequate, whether we're not just, you know, adding up and dividing by two, the, the amount of distance from the, from the property line that we need to be. Do you know what I'm saying?
So I think that was one of the reasons, since Nikki had experience with bees, that maybe that overview might put these specific issues in a context that might make more sense. And that's what I was hoping.
Well, that's one of the other things about researching the various municipalities that did have laws in place, had specific answers to some of these questions, and that helped inform the.
Yeah, but I understand your, your concerns, and I think, you know, everybody's concerned about all the residents and making it work for everybody, but I, I mean, I'm trying to remember what the fly, flyway barrier thing is. I don't even, I don't.
What a flyway barrier means is if, 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 you make the thing high enough so the bees have to fly over it, so then they're not, they're going to fly higher, and then they're not going to, then zoom down, you know, walk down, and you go.
Unless you have a pollinator, you're running right across the fence.
Yeah, it's interesting that, you know, with the pollinator discussion. Interesting, though, coming together on the same evening, but sure. So if everybody likes planting, you know, plants that welcome bees, and we're allowing that people, you know, I, I just don't.
So I, I just, maybe it's, to me, it makes sense to hear a little bit from Nikki, just because, you know, when, when you're trying to think about these, you know, restrictions, tighter, looser, bigger, smaller, I feel like I know so little that it's hard to make a decision, but, is everybody okay with Nikki sharing a few ideas?
Y'all got my, my, my comments?
Did, but I don't remember.
I didn't bring them with me.
Well, we also explored laws in various communities, including several on the Puget Sound.
Right. And so I guess, before we get into the weeds of that, I want to find out, what do you want to do? I mean, either you want to encourage beekeeping, or you don't want to encourage beekeeping. The, the reason for a municipality to encourage beekeeping is because the bees need help. The honey, honeybees need support in one way that, I mean, aside from pollinator gardens and pollinator-friendly plants, whatever, is human beekeepers can actively support colonies, monitor the colonies for disease, you know, because they're. monitor the colonies for disease, you know, because they're very subject to this borrel mites, which they can't naturally really fight very well if, really, they can use help in doing that. So the more that individual hives can be kept in an area, the more support that is for pollinator populations. And there, you know, there's evidence that, you know, our, you know, bee populations are declining, our food, our food supply, a good part of it depends on pollination, not just by honeybees, but, but by major pollinators as well. Anyway, there are a lot of good reasons to make conditions conducive to keeping bees. That's why I got into it. I didn't get into it, you know, for the honey, although that's certainly a wonderful side benefit. You're right in that it requires some care and some thought and some expertise. But in general, in my experience and what I've read is that, you know, people who are drawn to beekeeping don't tend to be, you know, careless people who, you know, just sort of go into it for the heck of it, you know. And, you know, a lot of people argue that, you know, you're more in danger from, you know, your neighbor's dog than, than from a hive.
If we could just back up a little bit to your initial statement, do we want to encourage this or do we not? That's not, that's not the, the horns, that's not the dilemma in the horns of which we're stuck. Assuming we do wanna do this, we wouldn't have gotten to the place where we're considering a trial of law. But wanna do it reasonably and safely, ensuring that the way in which it's, the conditions that we're setting for us are, are the right ones to make sure that this can be done.
I understand, I understand. So part of the focus of my comments about, you know, flyway barriers and things like that is understanding bee behavior. So, you know, the bee line, bees make a bee line from the hive to wherever they're going. So the reason for a flyway barrier is because they're going to make the most, the shortest distance to, you know, between, you know, you and the, you know, candy gardens and, you know, to say. And having, you know, having the distance of the hive, you know, 25 feet from a property line is probably not as effective as having a flyway barrier if, you know, if property, if, if you can still accomplish the same effect by having a flyway barrier even with a closer property line. And there, you know, you'd have fences, you could have just like, you know, a hedge, you know, a six-foot hedge. And in some case, you know, in a number of cases in the village, I think we find that those flyway barriers already exist on, on small plots. So I would hate to see my 25 feet, the reason I was recommending less than 25 feet is because especially here in the, you know, denser part of the village, 25 feet is, there's your whole plot right there. So, you know, the legislation that I, you know, from other places that I shared, you know, had usually, you know, provisions for some kind of a flyway barrier, which, which one's weight. And then also the positioning of the, the mouth of the hive, entrance of the hive away from the nearest property line, if you can, because they don't, like, they don't go out the door and around the back. You know? They don't. They, you know, the beekeeper should orient the hive with the entrance, you know, facing east, southeast, whatever, to catch the back some daylight, so they get going early in the morning. Also, so they get, you know, more of a southern sun in the winter to keep the hive warm. So like if you have, you know, depending on where you are in the plot, you know, from the property line, you know, if you orient the, the entrance properly and with a back to the property line, you shouldn't have a problem. So...
So Nikki, is the flyway barrier only in the direction of the entrance of the hive?
Yes.
And is there anything here, I'm forgetting my question, but does it talk about the orientation?
It is, if the entrance to any hive must face away from the property line closest to the hive.
But that has nothing to do with southeast.
Yeah, it doesn't. Right. I guess what I'm saying is that you want, the, the beekeeper wants the bee hive entrance to face the right direction. You don't want it facing north. And that combined with whatever his or her property orientation is, that's, those two factors will determine where on that plot of land you can place the, the hive. And you don't, you don't wanna have unnecessary restrictions on that placement.
Understood, but you're...
There's just limits, limits of...
Okay, you're assuming that, and, you know, a beekeeper knows that you wanna place the hive facing southeast, hopefully, but somebody who just decides, that sounds cool, and we have a pollinator gardens and I, you know, I can, look, we're allowed to now have bee hives. How do we ensure that people are sufficiently informed? How do we know that we're sufficiently informed that we can monitor this?
Well, you, you can't cover everything, but if you have the provision that the entrance faces away from the nearest property line...
The nearest property, but that could be, that could be...
The property line closest to the hive, but maybe it's...
Oh, it may be north instead of southeast.
You gotta, I mean, you can't make all decisions for the, for the beekeeper, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to create, I'm sorry if I'm not being clear, trying to create the combination of factors in the legislation that will allow the hive, you know, the maximum number of people to place a hive on their property. So...
So Nikki, another question, I knew it was. The flyway barrier, how close is that to the entrance typically? How, where does, where is it typically located to be effective? Like, is it within six feet or is it within 20 feet or is it a long... I'm asking.
I don't know the answer without a hand. But, but we can figure out.
Seems like closer than...
I don't know if that's...
Oh, get... I have to get out.
Well, you know, our, our definition, right, our working definition of a flyway barrier, if I'm reading it, is it's gotta be six feet in height, a solid wall fence, dense vegetation or combination, parallel to the property line, extends 20 feet beyond the colony in each direction so that all bees are close to the line. So we're talking about a full fenced-in area.
No, it's on one side, just on one side. It's just one wall there.
So you're talking about 40 foot?
Between the, between the hive and the property.
So the hive and then it goes 20 feet this way, 20 feet this way. It's one wall.
One, one wall, okay.
Yeah.
But again, there's nothing here that speaks to, you know, you can't cover everything that, that, that should be southeast. So...
There's nothing, you can't, you can't get into that.
But...
You just put their...
But it sounds like that's important because that's the way they go.
No, that's to maximize the, the...
I think that's ideal.
...warmth in the, in the hive, in the winter time, it should have southeast facing.
But will they, will they go another direction if they don't have a choice?
Will they...
Yeah, which is that they're gonna make a, you know, make a U-turn.
They orient to the sun to find directions.
Right, yeah.
And they're gonna fly out the front of the, the front, wherever that's facing. And from there, they're going to, as Nikki says, they create a bee line, which is what's the fastest direct path to wherever the nectar is.
I mean, so they do, they do go up and then they go in all directions eventually, but they don't come out of the entrance of the hive and go around the hive.
They might go up and then turn around, up there in the sky somewhere, go, someone go this way and someone go that way.
Right.
And then they'll appear for it. They'll come back at the end of the day and say, where'd you go? Where'd you go?
So I, I think what the most conservative, what I read is that you would have a flyway barrier between, you know, if, between the hive and the property line, if the prop, if the hive is too close to the property line in any direction, you know, even if the back of it is too close to property line. The way I read this, you probably would wanna have a high, have a flyway barrier even behind the hive if it's too close to the property barrier, but...
All right, so anything within...
Within the set...
Less than 25 feet.
Anything less than 25 feet is gonna need a six-foot barrier in any direction. Not just the single line with a, with a six-foot barrier.
No.
To any person that is not within 20 feet of the property.
Of the property line, but if the, I mean, so you, I guess if you had it within 25 feet of the property line on the corner...
Something about these two-family zones, wanna do, these two-family areas, they're not gonna have 20 feet in any one direction, so they're not gonna be building a six-foot fence around. So now they're gonna go to the planning board to get a...
Well, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have to go to the planning board if they made like a dense hedge or something, but that's why, that's why it struck, that's why it struck me as impractical to do that.
Well, that's why we were saying 25 feet eliminated the need for that. It might, it might eliminate some people from being able to have...
So if you had 25 feet, you would have, you would require a flyway barrier.
That's what we, that was our original reason.
Okay.
That at 25 feet, we eliminate the entire requirement for a flyway barrier.
Because most places...
Which really makes it easier for the people to do it, except it's gonna exclude...
More, more property.
Well, it may exclude more property people, but make it easier for other people at the time.
Because most of the statutes required flyway barriers when the hive was less than 25 feet.
Right, that's what I was saying. You know, I would suggest that 15 feet plus a flyway barrier, but if you wanna do 25 feet and, and no flyway barrier, that, that certainly gets around, you know, the problem of trying to explain where the flyway barrier should go.
So, one comment and then a question. So the one comment is the flyway barrier and parallax on a, on a winter day.
And when I...
Parallax, sun angle, sun is very low, you know, on a winter day, so the height is gonna be important in terms of actually blocking heat to the hive. So I'm just trying to get at, there's gonna be some optimum distance from the hive that you're gonna wanna set back to get the maximum amount of heat during the winter time. If the flyway barrier is too close to the hive, it's gonna just catch sound for most of the day, depending on the orientation. But, you know, the sun is very low in, in the winter time, as...
Right.
So, but then the question I had for you was on your property specifically.
My current one.
What, your current one? But now that you're a quarter lot, so now you've got two, two of the yards knocked off.
Right.
So now you have...
And the other two don't, don't, are, the setback isn't sufficient.
Right, so what does that do for you?
Excuse me?
So what part of this, I'm just trying to finish because you're, you're, it's not just that it's your property, but it's a, it's a difficult property.
But of a responsible hive keeper.
Yeah, so what would you need to be able to make this work?
So for one thing, not automatically excluding front yards or treating a corner property as, as two front yards. Incorporating, I think I mentioned in my comments, incorporating height above grade. So my corner property is a good 15 feet above the street level and there's no sidewalk below, so...
On your, on your side yard.
On the, yeah, on the side.
On the front side yard.
On the front side yard. So any bees flying out of there would be, or already well above, well above the height that you would need to be, that you would be looking for through your other regulations.
Mary Ann, was the restriction on, on corner properties that was parented in a number of these laws, was the reasoning just because that made it too easy for the bees to be into the community?
Well, I mean, you understand why you don't want it in the front yard, I'm assuming.
Aesthetic?
Is your question about front yard or corner yards? Corner yards is often too front, and really is often too front yard, that's why, that's why you treat corner lots as having too front yards.
So tell me why you didn't have it in the front yard.
I, I do not, listen, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just showing you what was in, no, 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 what was in other statutes.
Go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not the...
Is there something with the reasoning of this?
There's two possible reasons.
We don't know the reason from the statute.
Exactly, you don't know the reason, that's why we're asking.
We're not being stupid people so we can sort of chop out and pick out the thing. One is an aesthetic objection, that's oftentimes why you exclude things from the front yard. The second is sidewalks and bright ways, you're near the street, you're near the sidewalks, and so you don't have the same kind of potential blockages as you do on, on backyards and non-exposed side yards. So to me, those would be the two of the most obvious reasons to try to prevent them from being in the quote-unquote "open", you know, frontages. And I think it's a problem, I mean, I don't know, 'cause when you immediately said the height thing takes, takes the requirement for a flyway, and at the back of my head is exactly what Janice was saying. Now who's gonna be the expert looking over the permit to decide if that, your property is okay for the exclusion?
It's, it's like on a hill, it's often, yeah.
It's not happening that way, you know, I mean, it's too complicated. So unless you write the guidelines and expect people to be smart enough to, if they're gonna do bees, they're gonna, and they've got neighbors, then they've gotta be responsible in that question.
So definitely there's a need for responsibility here, and none of us, and Larry, including you here, is going to be able to ensure that people are doing this responsibly. I haven't gotten a clue how to raise this. I think it's a wonderful thing, I support the position, all the rest of it, but, you know, this is not my area of expertise, nor is it likely to be. But I'm very uncomfortable with, you know, making a law that involves a lot of considerations of, you know, safety and potential harassment without, and that requires knowledge on the part of the beekeeper. You, one of the things you're starting with is that to prevent a disease that bees are subject to, so I decide, you know, I'm convinced beekeeping sounds like a wonderful thing, I can put it in my backyard, I've got plenty of, plenty of room for it. I have no idea what this disease is, I have no idea what I'm supposed to do.
Yeah, so your colony will be dead by, by the winter time.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Your colony will be dead.
Oh, well, that was not the problem, but that's not exactly the point, right? The point is to do this so that the colony survives. How do we, so people who want to do this have to have information as well as commitment and...
Yeah, but you can't legislate that.
Well, you, aren't there beekeeper certificates or something equivalent? Show that you've taken a class in beekeeping somewhere, you know, like even a workshop?
I mean, in this article in the Enterprise, the guy said that even Beekeeping for Duck Dings was a pretty good resource, you know, do we, we, we need to have those out for the...
Answer the questions in the back of the book.
Yeah, right.
You know, I'm looking at the day in Ohio, Jack, that actually was pretty good. And there, they say you can't have the hive, not a ceiling, required front yard, but the required front setback or the corner setback. So that would mean, you know, if you've got a...
Big front yard.
Yeah, big front yard, you could have it, and maybe, maybe that, maybe that makes sense. I don't think, I don't think we have any setbacks less than 25 feet. I don't have a corner, I'm, I would be surprised if there's...
Except maybe grandfather structures in, on the side streets.
Yeah, but nonetheless, the required setback would still be, that, that house may not be in the required setback, but it still would be 20-foot feet. So maybe rather than saying not in the front yard, you're saying within the required front, the setback, right, you're getting...
So one thing, I was thinking, instead of probably getting up to the works is... So one thing, I was thinking, instead of probably getting up to the works is.
Yeah, there's no, there's no front setback smaller than 30 feet. It's 75, 60, 50, 30 by 30, so maybe that's the way to deal with it, is to say the front, you know, rather than within the front yard, within the front yard setback.
Which we're saying it can't be in any setbacks, right? Sorry, aren't we saying that it can't be in any side yard setbacks as well?
Well, no, we're doing it by feet from the side.
Oh, oh, I thought the side setbacks were 25 feet, never mind.
You know, sometimes they're 15, sometimes they're 10, yeah. So, so, so maybe, maybe there were, I mean, that's just one, one small issue.
So what about if.
Do people agree that that's a change, rather than saying it can't be in the front yard, it can't be within the front yard setback?
I think so.
I think that was the intention there.
I mean, you brought up, is there an aesthetic that we're worried about? I mean, you're saying that people don't like to walk down the street.
But you know, if it's in a setback, you can put a, you know.
You can put anything in.
In the setback, you know?
I think they'll be more worried about company at their barbecue than they are going to be walking down the street.
So the other question I have is, what about if we're, if we're concerned about all this stuff? Maybe we have to make it so that the hives can only be on larger properties, I mean, larger than, you know, we argued about trying to make them smaller for our produce to be more inclusive, but maybe that's the wrong way to go. I mean, do we want hives up and down Jaffrey Park?
It's all the politics of that.
But, I mean, you don't need to have hives to have pollinator pathway, right?
There, you can have honey pervert feeders.
Very. You know, if anything, the hives should be over kind of by Nevis, so that everyone over there gets their vegetables pollinated, but the question is, you know, so larger properties would certainly prevent most of these kind of danger restrictions.
Well, just by saying 25 feet, we're limiting it to.
Right, you're, you've already.
We're not saying only one at 10 zones, what we are saying houses that have a property that allow 25 feet, if you don't.
You know, I'm saying it could be better, should it be better to, to prevent the headaches?
You know, it's, but I'm not sure there's going to be headaches at, at 25 feet, it's pretty assumed that, that there's no need for flyway zones, so that makes it reasonably safe. The only way it may not be safe is for someone with an allergy, which we have, double for this.
Well, I, it's 25, I mean, actually, the number was even smaller than it was. Yeah, but the.
We chose 25 to make it bigger.
Right, and, and then to say, hey, listen, 20, if you, if, if less than 25 feet, you need a flyway barrier, 25 feet, you don't. But what's to keep, why is it 25 feet? Keep the bees off the neighbors, is it more likely to keep the bees off the neighbor's property?
I think it's kind of arbitrary, but.
There is a distance where the bees start to become aggressive if, if there's activity near the hives, right? I mean, there is a kind of a protection zone around.
Well.
What, six or 10 feet.
Around the leave-in hive, okay, and they, honeybees normally will leave you alone, even if you're like right near the hive, if you're not getting in their faces, if you're not trying. So, um. Back when I had.
Caught it by, in, in their faces. If you've got a smoker and you've got your.
Yeah, yeah.
You're getting in their face there, aren't you?
Um, but, and, and that, that brings me to a separate issue, which I want to come back to, which is that, you know, the intervention, the beekeepers' interventions with the hive, that could be problematical for neighbors, so do want to come back to that. But, you know, I could sit five, 10 feet away from my hives, as long as I didn't sit, you know, in the middle of the path, the flight path, bee hives. I could sit there and read a book and they wouldn't bother me, they just quiz right by, and, you know, they, they're not normally aggressive. When they get aggressive is when you, when you start to, to try to open the hive, or.
Throw something at the hive.
Yeah, or, you know, say, you know, I don't know, if they, I don't know, say a skunk started robbing the hive, honey from the hive, or not honey, bees, actually, you know, skunks will kill bees, and their mouths don't, aren't affected by stings, so you have a skunk attacking, you know, sort of.
So unhappy neighbors can get skunks?
What?
Your neighbors being, I'm getting vice.
Skunks, send them over. Then you've got to smell the skunk unless you're more than 25 feet away.
So if something disturbs the hive, scratches on it, or, you know, rocks it or something, then they'll get, you know, they'll, they'll try to protect. The reason when you're a beekeeper, when, you know, you have to open the hive for regular inspections, you know, every two, three weeks, and that's when you wear, you know, the bee costume and have a smoker, because the smoke kind of calms them and confuses them and confuses their sense of scent, their smell, because they, they react strongly to smell, and they can smell beer, for example. So, they're left to their own devices, they will, you know, they won't hurt you. You know, if they come and, you know, smell your, your peonies or something in your own backyard, you know, they're not going to bother, they're not, they're not going to bite your kid just because, not going to sting your kid just because, you know, the kid is there next to the peonies, you know, they're just going to go come there and forage and then go.
Nikki, you used the, the phrase, you know, a couple of times where you said, for example, so when you go, you have to clean out the hive every couple of weeks and you have.
You don't clean it after you just inspect it.
After you've just inspected, and you have to protect a closing, well, you may know that.
Right.
But I don't know that, and not everybody who decides, gee, wouldn't it be cool to keep bees, is going, we have no way of ensuring that people know what they're doing. And if they don't know what they're doing, and bees can become distressed and angry and upset by various human behaviors, I, I am at this point feeling like we are, we, we need, if we are going to proceed with this, we need to have some, I don't know, I don't know, what kind of informed expert person to give us a little tutorial.
But we've got here duties of a beekeeper.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's either duty of every beekeeper to be educated and.
Yeah, but how are we going to know? If we don't know what an educated, what, what, so, we're just, we could pass this.
Because here we have someone who's kept bees, who's well-informed and educated, has taken part in programs, educational programs. So I'm, that's what, why we asked Nikki to be here to talk to us about some of these issues, but that's not going to.
How are we going to be sure that another potential beekeeper does know that the hive has to be inspected every two weeks, that, that you need to wear protective clothing?
Because we're not going to.
Certain activities will annoy the bees.
We're not going to be issuing certificates to them.
I'm sorry?
We're not issuing certificates of approval, of, of, we're not giving tests.
Do you require, you know, do you require rightful owners to pass educational, I guess?
But see, Janice, I think the thing you're suggesting, the person who'd be at risk is.
The person themselves.
The beekeeper who hasn't, you know, bothered to learn what he's supposed to do.
So we said the commonest theory, you know, it's because you.
Let me care.
Bee hive.
You what? So you don't want me?
And it gets.
So if somebody is irresponsible owner and they're, the worst that's going to happen is all their bees will die and then.
And they may, they might get stung if they, if they start fooling around with the hives without protecting, they're going to get stung, but my sense is, is, is it's an immediate, um, uh, the bees are going to get the people that are right there, they're not going to get upset, and then, you know, go fly and extort them.
And bite somebody.
Yeah, they should, I mean, you know, yes, you want them to be good neighbors, you want beekeepers to be good neighbors, and, you know.
I think the analogy would, you know, we, we certainly accept people with dogs, and, and there are a lot of concerns about, you know, irresponsible dog owners who aren't getting a certificate, and aren't getting training, and I think it'd be quite unpleasant. But we let that happen and we deal with it and you, you know, so I don't know how different it is.
So bees should be unleashed.
At least on the aqueduct.
So, so you've had, you know, you've had beekeepers.
Yeah, yes.
Already. And I, I think one of the benefits of legislation is to be able to have a little more control over what happens and where, and to be able to prevent nuisance situations. And that defines, that involves, as I think I said in my comments, defining what nuisance situation is, so in one of the cities that I sent you an example of, uh, and I don't remember which one, I don't remember if I, I don't think I went into this, but what, what I was reading indicated that one of the reasons that they passed it was they had a guy who had 10 hives on his property, and, you know, that he must keep them clean, and people were complaining, and, you know, you want to be able to, um, protect yourself against that, that, you know, whatever you define as a nuisance, but you want at the same time to be able to make it legal to encourage the, the practice that you do want.
How would you know that the hive is pretty dirty and not being maintained? I mean, you might never tell over the course of seven years, but.
Let the bees die, I don't know, but.
You couldn't tell by walking by on the street, like.
Yeah, maybe they were tumble down or something, I don't know.
Well, that's, I mean, you could tell after a while that they were in disarray.
But again, I think Nikki's point is well taken, if, if we can come up with general rules here that apply well, it's, the, the people, you know, like with our, our home office law, you know, the late tax comes and says, well, I, I've always had a home office, and and we said, well, nobody's complaining, you know, so if Nikki doesn't quite meet this requirement, but nobody's saying Nikki is, is being a nuisance, and nobody is complaining, until that happens, there's no reason why Nikki can't keep her hives. Somebody who's starting a hive may look at this and, you know, and have other direction and how to go or what to do. But unless they're, you know, we're not going to be having our police going to homes and measuring setbacks for hives. And unless someone, you know, unless you run afoul of a neighbor who's, I don't know, got stung, you know, or, you know, it's a serious violation.
So I think one of the benefits of this particular law is that it requires a notification to your, so that people can be ready. At least they can have some, if they need to get an EpiPen. Or they can come to talk to you and say, please don't do it, because.
Right, they have a right to do that.
And that's good, that's better than it just cropping up.
Well, that, I mean, stuff like that works, I remember when I first came to my neighborhood, the person next door, believe it or not, used to put milk powder on her back so she could encourage raccoons. I know, I know, she was a kind of a crazy lady, but, but the raccoons sometimes came to our port. But once I talked to her and said, I have a little, did she stop, I mean, did you, you know, I think a lot of times if you talk to neighbors, that's why the notification works, I think, I hope you.
Right, so, so for the sake of argument, let's say we're talking about one family houses with 25-foot setbacks.
So now we don't need a flyway barrier.
No flyway barrier, and, and there are duties defined of the beekeeper, and let's let her registration and talk.
So 25 feet of foot setbacks, even if it's in a front yard?
No, the front yard is.
And we say that it can't be located in the front yard setback, so that the smallest setback is 30 feet, so in the front yard it would have to be 30 feet. Whatever the front yards are getting is for your district.
They have to be.
So where would you put it in your yard, right against the house?
My recommendation is you leave it where it doesn't really.
Well, I don't have this, no, you shared it in a row.
Oh, I thought you were.
All the house where, just, just so you can visualize this in terms of property size, I have two and a half building blocks, I bordered on the field bank conservation barrier. My hives were, I had two, because they often rush many of you to prepare them, were near, were near the northern property line, about 50 feet from northern property line, facing south, southeast. So they were well within the, you know, well beyond 25 feet from my neighbor to the south. So that would have met all your requirements. And the only.
Towards your house, so.
They moved, they moved past my house, yeah.
Exactly, but you had a client of house that that was a flyway.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, never had an issue, my, my neighbor who had two small boys, the only thing she did was she killed a clover in her lawn so that her boys, their feet might not accidentally step on a bee, be on a clover. Everybody follow, everybody loved the honey?
That was a good way to be.
Yeah.
Take nice and.
But on your new property, is your side and front yard?
I don't know, but that's why I bring up the height issue too, which, which is in one of the codes that I sent you.
There's several of them, there's a provision that reads, um, in lieu, well, this is, in, in lieu of a fence, as if you had a flyway barrier, hives may be placed at least eight feet above adjacent ground levels.
Which one would be?
Okay, location of hives, hives must be at least 20 feet, 25 feet from each property line, unless one of the following circumstances applies, in which case the hive must be at least 10 feet. A, the hives are at least eight feet above the adjacent ground, then there's six feet above when you have a flyway barrier. So, so the hives are at least eight feet above the adjacent ground, pretty close to 25.
And we got into the flyway barrier, why, I don't, don't become.
Because if you want to make it 25 feet, then, and we weren't making any exception to it. And that's, so we're leaving out those other, you know, two family and all that, and then leaving out the flyway barrier, and then.
Now we're at registration.
No, actually, we're not, because I'm not done with it yet.
Okay.
Because I feel like what we're doing now is restricting a whole set of single-family houses out. In fact, I don't know if a good number of the houses around Jaffrey Park.
I don't know, I think probably true.
Where to be able to get 25 feet back up.
I, I wanted to, I wanted it to be, you know, a little more median in terms of, yeah, thinking about.
That's why I was wondering why.
I would, I would like it, but I'm just wondering if we're, um, if, if we might, if we might be better to start out with more restrictions and see how well it's received, and then move towards this if there were not problems or complaints.
I'm just concerned that we have, we, I mean, I know this is kind of a vested interest, but I'm concerned that we have someone here who's an experienced beekeeper who might want to keep bees, who can't, who will not be able to keep the day one of this legislation. So it seems to me that we have a use case, which is because we may have an arbitrary decision to say, let's just get rid of flyways.
But, but the alternative, and I'm completely sympathetic, I accept that you are the most, very responsible, that you know a great deal about this, but basically what you're suggesting is we should construct legislation to accommodate a particular person.
No, we're, no, we're creating legislation to accommodate the, the specific size factors of, because it's not just her property, it's like properties all through the village are going to be facing the same sort of thing. I thought the idea of the flyway was to allow you to take care of situations where you didn't have the setbacks, but you could then therefore put some other kind of physical barrier up to provide the same factor of safety that the setback was.
Yeah, I know, that is, it's an eye.
So when you see large swaths of the village not able to, to, you know, it's not really one F. you know, it's not really one F10 or one F15, right? One F30 or whatever it is that above, the only ones that can satisfy the requirements. And at that point.
Right.
It's not, it, it just seems like it's gotten too restrictive at that point.
And, and that's, I mean, I'm not even sure I do wanna keep bees again. I, I, you know, and that's not why I bring up my property as an example, but it's because of that, you know, as I think I said in my comments, you know, in terms of the, the density of the village and the property size that we have. I mean, you know, what, what will be left? Just Matheson Park and, and the private one, not ours. And, you know.
Clinton. I mean, you know, those areas.
West Clinton, yeah.
And, uh, Ardsley.
Oh, Foxville Park.
Yeah, so certain places will have enough property. But those are all, so in other words, it's not just single-family, but the single-family, that's why I think that wherever we said, we initially said lots, only 20,000 sub-teams. So the question is, what are the actual, you know, where do those 25-foot setbacks become?
We don't, they keep bees in New York City. They keep bees on roofs.
Well, I, I was in favor of rooftop bee hives myself.
I mean, you know what, Mark? Most cities, like minimum, I, I, I'm sure there's some non-compliant, but the, like the width in the one F, it was 250. The width in the one F40 is 150. The minimum width in a one F20 is 100 feet. And a one F10 is 85. One place would be the one F5 where it's just the minimum is 50. But if it's, if it, are you talking about.
So one F10s can.
Yeah.
Can magically meet a 25-foot setback.
That's the width of the whole property.
It would be the width of the deckyard.
Then you have children, the house.
Always on the yard.
Back to the roof. So.
Yeah, I know. You know, this is where we were last, I mean, the flyway barrier, but, and, and actually I thought it was, was you, Mark, but it doesn't really matter. This, why don't we just make it 25? Now we don't have to worry about the.
Well, that was a proposition, but then thinking that it was too many houses.
I don't think it's restricted.
Honey, I'm sorry.
I just didn't think it was restricted too many houses.
So how many houses in Sparrow Park or Jaffrey Park could actually have bee hives?
Now, mine can.
Just can?
No.
Honey, I've made the suggestion.
Sparrow Park is one F5. We can't have anything as far as.
Okay, so Jaffrey Park, is those a one F10?
Well, we're one F, we're one F5.
You are?
So, Honey, I believe had made the suggestion that we start with it being more restrictive and see if it works.
Let's see if it's well received and there are no problems. And, you know, if somebody has, I don't. It still looks like your grandfathered in. If you've had something and your neighbors have no problems, you know.
It's, it's like the analogy you have, Larry, to home occupations, you know.
If it's there, it's like.
Right. But honestly, I, I feel like now we are just going around the same track and I'm not seeing any resolution here.
Maybe you wanna, maybe you wanna take a poll just to, to move off the dollar like you want. When you, when you see that.
It's just a well.
Yeah, right.
The reason I'm, it's, it seems like when we, when we get into the making the laws become so, um, convoluted, so many, yeah, so this and then this, and then this, and then this, and then it's.
And if this, and that.
It, it seems like it, it almost, you know, defines anybody making sense of it. But, um, I mean, a dedicated person who says, okay, does this fit me? Da, 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 da. But, um, I mean, I'd like to get over the hump, you know, that, you know, Janice, you brought up, you know, that some people are kinda scared of this idea, but if you want to support it, I think we're all in agreement that it's, it's a valuable part of this whole sustainable effort that we're trying to go for. And it, it fits that. But you don't wanna shoot yourself in the foot by undoing the goal you're trying to get to by making some people, you know, pretty, you know, negative or worried or, so, I mean, if, if you ask me tomorrow, I might have a different point of view. Keeping it simple at the moment. And, you know, what you're saying is we're not cutting out, by the sounds of what you're saying, we're not, we're not just saying it's the giant estates in, in Matheson Park. We're, we're saying they have to be big, but they don't have to be the biggest.
Yeah, we were saying it can't be one F5, so sure. So it has to be one F10s potentially or bigger.
And I think it's funny to start there. I, I think it's, that's, that's, they're not allowed now at all. This is permitted beekeeping with a particular sized property. And I think that's, if the goal is to encourage beekeeping, that's a pretty good start.
It also covers most of the village, because most of the village is bigger than.
Yes.
There were, there were total numbers of people, but a lot of space.
Yeah.
And if we're trying to increase the space in which, um, bees exist.
Okay, so it's going to registration.
Okay.
Well, here's, here's what the registration conditions are. Bee hive shall be registered annually with the village on forms provided or approved by the village. The purposes of, because you would ask, what's the purpose? The purposes of such registration be to maintain a record of the number and location of each, I have, I have apiary in there. I think we planned it out, Larry, we want a hive. To obtain the most current contact and confidential education information in connection with each beekeeper and to obtain a certification from each beekeeper acknowledging receipt of a copy of this article, the most current rules and regulations that may be promulgated pursuant. As you say, you have to update it and then the notification. Any person intending to maintain a bee hive must notify a body of property owners and company presidents of those properties at least two weeks prior to registration. And you should test to maintain a hive.
So do they have to do that every year, every neighbor?
Yeah, because you have to register every year. Yeah, it's not every neighbor, just, you know, it's not, it's not like a big notice, this is a body neighbors.
That's reasonable.
So it should see.
And do it online, right?
But haven't you?
I mean.
Well, your needs could change.
Yeah.
So at least that would give you, or your hive configuration could change. You could add or delete hives, I suppose, so, right? So that allows people to, you're talking typically four houses, maybe. You're not talking about the planning board 250 feet, right? We're talking immediate neighbors, I would imagine.
And the reason why it's important is because they may have an intero partnership where somebody's kid may have been noticed in the past year, analogy.
Maybe it's actually four of them. I mean, these, these are things that can be made, listed online that somebody could check. But you say, oh, well, I'm planning to move to this neighborhood. I think I'd like to see if somebody in my immediate backyard is gonna have.
You could also just go to the four people and say, hey, you know, I'm, we can go talk to them.
Yeah, right.
And sign it.
It's a long story.
You know, sign something. Once it, no, once in a while, once in a while you will let people come before the planning board who might have to do it.
Yeah, I think that maybe.
Would you say personal service of the neighbors to the property owners so that allows them to get the signature?
How do you feel about the registration thing?
Yeah. Okay, so what, wait, let me see what, what these issues were. Um, unclear after initial registration, okay, what does the annual registration consist of? And I think that's stated in there. Do you have to notice neighbors every year? Yeah, what if you have hives and then your three new neighbor objects? Well, the point is, they can object, but the, the village isn't gonna say, hey, he's your neighbor, we're not gonna get involved. I mean, the notifications between you and your neighbor.
Okay.
The notifications, I mean.
Yes.
Right, it's not gonna.
It's something you can't.
Do you have any objections, let the village administrate?
Which I'm gonna do well with.
I said it's not gonna say, you're gonna have any objections on the village administrator.
Bring your sample of the bees.
Well, penalties?
Um, yeah. I don't know what you want.
Penalties?
Yeah, I get penalties, needs to be discussed. I don't know what kind of penalties.
Refaction of laws.
Well, we don't give a license, we just make a register, you know.
Right, of registration.
Who's that mean? The village is gonna kind of take the hives away?
Well, you can, I mean.
What happens if, what happens if you're in violation of the rules?
You can, you can require, it's just like a stop work order, you know. You can require that they remove the hives if they're not, if they're not playing by the rules.
So, but that's a, there's not a cash penalty, it's just.
Doesn't have to be cash penalty. It should be stated that if they're in violation of these rules, the village can.
Require them and or charge them.
Require them to remove it.
And if they don't, then the village.
I don't think.
No, I, there should be a fine before, if the only, well, if the only request we have is to say you have to take down your hive, that does not allow for any correction.
Right.
So I would prefer.
So you wanted, you wanted to, uh, $250,000.
Nice round.
And three bee stings.
I mean, again, I come back to the nuisance, like what, what would, what would be a precipitating complaint? So, um, say, uh, somebody has their hives too close to property line and they fly directly, you know, into their neighbor's.
Doors.
You know, or, or something. The neighbor complains to the village and, and it turns out to be, you know, non-compliant. So then what, you know, what, how do you have to make?
Well, that's a violation.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Right.
So then you. So the, the, the nuisance thing, I mean, that, that's a violation. And there, there is also, we just have a more general thing that, you know, it's unlawful to keep the colony in such a manner or such a disposition, so as to cause any unhealthy condition interfere with the normal use and enjoyment of human period of life, bothers or interfere with the normal use and enjoyment of any property. And I, I think it covers it, plus, plus there's a, you know, there's requirements about, about how you have to do it and, you know, and, and the thing about if it's too close, well, that's an easy one. That's an easy violation.
So you can page your fine and then at the same time you said, okay, I'm moving it back to the, the, the space.
Yeah.
And then.
Okay.